Mission meeting to order. This is our semi-annual day meeting. Looks like we have a light crowd. So what we'll do, for me to say this commissioners, we had some technical difficulties. So you will not be able to see your agenda on the iPad today. So it will be just a voting machine today. Sorry about that, but sometimes technology is your best friend and sometimes it ain't. So today it wasn't, but we will get through it. Alrighty, first for prayer, we have Senior Pastor Robbie Leach. Robbie Leach is Senior Pastor at Beach Park Baptist Church, has been for, how long is that now Robbie? Twenty-two years in Oliver Springs. Robbie has led many, many groups to Israel, led many, many people to Christ. Also Robbie is just, just an all-around good man. So glad to have him here today to, he's also been at Washington DC to speak on behalf of, of Israel as well. Glad to have him here with us. And then for the pledge, we have our EMS Director Nathan Sweet. Nathan was in the United States Air Force where he was a firefighter from 1997 to 2001, stationed in Peterson Air Force Base in Colorado Springs where he left the Air Force and as a senior airman. So Pastor Leach, you were, please stand.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord. We are so blessed among all the people of the earth to be able to live in this little Tennessee Valley that you've put us in. Lord, we are so blessed. Father, I pray today that you would be with Jerusalem. Lord, that you would be with all the people of the earth. And Lord, today that you would be with us in this meeting. Lord, these fine men and women that have been elected to these positions, Father, I pray that you would guide them, Lord, as they debate, as they discuss, as they make decisions about our future. So Father, I pray for them as individuals, I pray for them as commission, I pray for all of our leaders that we have placed in office, that you have placed in office. Father, we ask for your divine direction. We ask that you be with our military, with our children in our schools. And Father, once again, we just want to thank you and we want to give you praise and honor and glory. And I pray that we will use every breath that we have to live for you. Father, we love you, we give you praise and honor in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Recognize our flag, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Alright, before we do Appearance of Citizens, I'd like to recognize Shayla from, there she is. She'd like to make an introduction to, to the commission.
Good morning. Is it, we're good? Good morning. I am Shayla Wilson, Executive Director ASAP of Anderson. I wanted to introduce to you guys today our Ropes Coordinator. She took over for Katherine Brunson, if you're familiar with her. And so she is leading our Tennessee Save a Life Training, Knox and Distribution and some other things for ASAP. And so I wanted to give her a chance to introduce herself to you all as a resource here in this community.
As Shayla said, my name is Kristi McCallum. I'm the new Regional Overdose Prevention Specialist for Anderson County. I serve seven other counties. Looking forward to working with you all. My job is specifically just to reduce and prevent as many overdoses as we can in our communities. We all know it's a pretty big epidemic right now, so, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Okie doke. We are now going to move forward to the Appearance of Citizens. Just as a reminder, this is a time on our agenda where citizens can address the County Commission on items that are on or not on the agenda. You'll be allowed to have three minutes. We will give you a warning at 30 seconds and then at three minutes, I'm gonna, in case we have to do it, it is a hard cutoff, apologies now. But what we, I will say this, I know that there's a good crowd here, some here wanting to speak, some not. As it pertains to the, the busing contract that's under appeal, I will say in terms of the grounds of appeal with that, we do have a meeting scheduled for the 22nd at four, at 4:30. So please know that on April 22nd at 4:30, that there will be an opportunity for your voices to be heard there as well. So I will probably, if there's any comments on, in regards to that, that probably will be limited, just upfront. So I will open up the floor to anyone who would like to address the commission for items on or not on the agenda. And please state your name and your address.
My name is Dale Crank. I live in South, in Oak Ridge on South Tampa Lane. I'm the pastor at Oak Ridge Alliance Church and I'm speaking on the issues of the material that, the sexually explicit material that is in our libraries. When I was, when my children were very small, we lived in a, in a, in a house that had a large backyard that had a big privacy fence. And the kids were able to be out there without very much supervision and that was a very good thing. Now that privacy fence did a couple of things for us. First of all, it restricted where they could go. And they were young enough and naive enough not to realize that there was a big world out there and their mean parents were keeping them from exploring all that big world. If someone had come to my kids in that particular time and would have informed them about all of the world that they were not being able to explore, I would have recognized that there was some ulterior motive on the part of those people. I may not have known what that was, but I would have recognized that it was there. We can debate whether our society's Judeo-Christian values are the cause or just coincidental to our prosperity as a nation. But what we can't debate, what's undeniable, is that there is a connection between the fence that has been put around this society by our Judeo-Christian values and the prosperity that we enjoy. And we have people today who are trying to tear down that fence and allow dangers from without, as well as freedom to go to other places for our society. And it's going to destroy our society. You have the opportunity as the County Commission, and I urge you to recognize that there are some bad actors there and that there are ulterior motives. I'm not trying to say what those ulterior motives are, I'm just saying, if I as a father heard someone try to tell my kids about all of the wide world that was open to them, I would have recognized that there was something that was wrong. And that's what we're dealing with in our society today. And so I thank you for the privilege of, of addressing you. And I would urge you to be very, very careful about what you allow in our public libraries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okie doke. Was there anyone else who would like to address? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Stephen Clare with 1222 Development at 3712 Cunningham Road there in Powell. Next month, I wanted to come today and I appreciate the time to address the commission. We're seeking the rezoning of a property there on Mountain Road, which you may have heard of, 2R1, which was approved by the BCA and the Planning Commission. I just wanted to take a few minutes to clarify a few points and update the commission on what we've been working on with that site. You know, our goal in this has been to be able to provide single-family homes that can be sold, fee simple, to the residents of Anderson County and at the workforce here as well that can be at an obtainable price. And we know, it's been discussed very much, half of that workforce doesn't even live in Anderson County because there aren't homes, there's a need for those. And currently, the property is zoned A2, which is rural residential. And this was in the zoning ordinance, it's described as a zoning that's fit for remote areas or areas with insufficient infrastructure. Currently under that zoning, this property could be developed into about 56, or excuse me, 53, 22,000 square foot lots with duplex homes. And that would yield about 126 units. Or it would also allow it being broken up to about 53 lots that mobile homes could be placed on. The road in front of the site though, to address the zoning, is a 35-foot road with a turn lane. We've met with sewer and water utilities as far as capacity goes and we have those letters in hand. And there's also precedent that lies up and down Mountain Road there, about 650 feet in one direction and about three-quarters of a mile in the other direction for similar neighborhoods with R1. We really are wanting to zone this property, R1, so that we can cluster the development in the center of the property, using about 38 acres of that and leaving about 28 acres of green space. I went back and redrew the concept to meet the same lot count as what it would be under A2 at 126. And also installed a 50-foot buffer around the edges of the property on the sides and the frontage, which would be planted as a, as an evergreen buffer to shield as much as possible visually encroaching on the neighbors that live nearby. And being able to do it this way, we can keep the lots manageable size, which obviously translates to a lower development cost and being able to push that forward then into a lower home price so that these are obtainable. But again, we want to remain within keeping of what the A2 zone would allow currently anyway, at 126 units.
30 seconds.
So just to conclude, I, we really want to come up with a plan that works for you all, that works for the county. And we welcome your input. So if it's so pleased, Chairman, I'd like to leave my contact information with Mrs. Frank. Any of the commissioners that would like to discuss this or look at the plans that I've revised before next month, I would love to take the time to do so, at your convenience.
Right. That is time, thank you, sir. Okie doke. Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
There is a gentleman that didn't make the list. Can we put him on the list?
Okay.
Okay, my name is Tisha Hutchison and I live at 8009 Bell's Campground. I'm here, the bus contract, but I would love for you all to reconsider the time for that meeting on the 22nd because a lot of the people that, you know, it's affecting their livelihood, they will actually be on their bus routes. So we would greatly appreciate it if you guys could push it back just a little bit. That way we can just come and, you know, be a part of it because it is affecting our livelihoods. There's quite a few of us, but we would love for you guys to please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Akers, were you?
Hi, I want to address the County Council. My name is Curtis Akers. I pastor the Clinton Church of God. I live in the city of Clinton and have been pastor there for 30 years. Also served as chaplain for the city of Clinton for 10 years. Primary responsibility was law enforcement. I would like to address protecting our children from issues that they are not ready to handle. In the state of Tennessee, we have a number of laws that state that minors, children that have not yet reached maturity level cannot partake in certain things. They can't drive, they can't own a handgun, they can't vote, they can't, they can't even be left alone at the house by themselves. Ah, wow. Because they're not ready to handle it. I teach a boys Sunday School class, 11 to 14-year-olds. I knew what I was asking for when I took the class. But let me tell you a little story. This morning when I woke up, well yesterday, and what I do most Sundays is, they love the donuts I get for them. And I'm usually able to give them to them and say, hey, take them home. But not yesterday, the guys left the donuts, I guess they didn't like my selection. But boy, when I woke up this morning, good thing my wife is out of town with her sister on vacation, our counter was covered in ants. They just made their way toward that sweet donut, as do some of our children who don't know that what they're headed for may cause them harm for years to come. They put them in relationships where they don't have a good foundation because they didn't really have the maturity level to make the decisions. We are the adults. We have the responsibility of protection. I listened last night to all of the, the March 27th, I believe it was, commission or a meeting for the, the public library. And I kept hearing over and over again, free speech, free speech, we gotta have free speech. Well, guess what? There are certain things that are not allowed under free speech. Child pornography is one of those that is not protected by the laws of free speech in the United States. Thank you, Chairman Mays, I appreciate you allowing me, or Mays, excuse me.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not good at talking in front of people. My heart's about to beat out of my chest, I'm so nervous. My name is Mona Smith. I live at 243 Long Mountain Road and I'm with the bus company. My husband and I have been married for about 18 years and we did a lot of DCS foster and we had about 30 kids that we did DCS foster. And out of those kids, we adopted seven. We adopted seven kids, so there is, should be no doubt that I love kids. And when I was first approached about being a bus driver, I said, there ain't no way. I'm not driving no bus. And someone said, well, you have a 15-passenger van, it ain't that much different. And I'm like, okay. So as a Christian, you're supposed to pray, God, I don't want to do this if it ain't your will. And I'll tell you what, getting your CDLs is hard because when I got over there, that woman had me frazzled. And I said, God, if it's not your will, then it's not your will and I will not become a bus driver. And I thought I'd failed it, but he made a way for me to become a bus driver and that has become my mission, to be a bus driver. And I told you some little bit about my past so that you would know it's our livelihood. Now I know I have the opportunity, if this doesn't work out the way I want it, I have the opportunity to, to go work for somebody else. But let me tell you, for 20 years, I was an office manager for Marino Therapy Center. And they come to all the office managers, we had seven locations, and they said, you know, we gotta work on the budget. Instead of taking money away from the therapists that made tons of money, more than what us office managers did, they said, you can either go to our sister company, which everybody hated, or you can get, or leave, or you can stay with a $4 cut in pay. And you know what I chose? I chose a $4 cut in pay because I loved my job that much. And I was dedicated because the, the woman that I worked for was a Christian. She was a Catholic. And I loved my job enough that I was willing to take that $4 cut pay. So I just, I guess if it doesn't work out the way I want it to, I will not go to the other company. I want to stay with the people.
30 seconds, ma'am.
That really love what they do and the children and everybody involved. I will, I will let God help me find something else in life to do for his will because I know he put me in this job. And I know he put me with those people back there. They are wonderful and I'm just begging everyone of you to chew on that for a little bit and realize what's going on, there's so much more involved that I don't even understand. But I just wanted to let you know a little bit about my life and the livelihood. There's a bunch of us back here, our livelihood's on the line and our ministry's on the line for these children and they, we all need God. And there are children, there are generation, next generation.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just want to say thank you and I love Jesus, I just want to say that. I'm saved. I don't even know why I need to tell you that, but I am, I'm saved. I thank God for everything he's done for me and my life.
Alright, thank you so much.
I just want you to understand that.
My name is, my name is Nathan Mullins. I'm living in Oak Ridge and I am also here to represent the Christians. And so let me begin by reading from Martin Luther King Jr. "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." Now, this thing I'm holding up here, this PFLAG meeting for library supporters to which everyone was invited, was hosted by Miriam, your Clinton Library Director, an Oak Ridge Librarian, and Ann Backus, the radical activist in the Unitarian Church Administration. My recording, which is evidence here, was them discussing how to subvert the County Commission by buying books that were never approved or on the list of the Secretary of State Trey Hargit. This County Commission has been silent in the face of that evidence. The community standard was proven by my campaign to bring county church support to the public forum. Plainly, the youth sex ed agenda was shown to be Oak Ridge liberal progressive churches at that forum. "The people of Anderson County should distrust the motivations and backroom deals to squelch by this liberal establishment, except for the four conservatives, that are guarding this woke PC attack on your children. Myself and four Republicans with Representative Reagan will not be silent. If the voter wants to be heard, you must reach your congressman and representatives on our Bill 1661, or it will be blocked." Now, this is a bigger cue card, I won't show this, I'll just read from it as if it was a note. But in answer to what our liberal friends got on the hotline and called their defense, in answer to the New York Times, I would like to read what I wrote.
You got 30 seconds.
RFK Jr. declared the New York Times "an instrument of the Democrat Party." I say of their unfair, snide gutter press, "They have less credibility than the National Enquirer." The New York Times has spoken for your Democrat constituency here and they painted us unfairly. And I think it should be allowed under public, Rule 17 should be struck down so the people can answer back.
It's time, Mr. Mullins.
Thank you.
Alright. Yes.
Mr. Mullins?
Yes, sir.
I read that article of the New York Times that really lambasted this community. You read that article too?
We're not gonna, listen, this is not going to be a continuation of Appearance of Citizens, just for the sake of allowing more time. Alright, is there any other citizens that would like to address the County Commission? Alright, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Okay, the consent agenda. Alright, we have a motion by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner McCamey to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, the regular agenda. Is there anything on the irregular agenda? Is this same, Commissioner Wondell, is that your, let's see here. Okay, and Commissioner McCamey's second, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could we, upon the request of the Lady of Management of the Bus Lines, talk about changing the time of the meeting? Could you put that on the agenda?
It'll be in Robbie's purchasing report, at least it should, wherever Robbie's at.
Can we take it up?
It's in Robbie's purchasing report, we can take it up then.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, is there anything else? Seeing none, all in favor of the agenda signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, Public Hearing Report, Vice Chairman Vandergriff.
Thank you, Chairman Mays. At 8:30 this morning, or sorry, 9 o'clock this morning, we had a public hearing to discuss the rezoning of a property at 1442 Lake City Highway from A2 rural residential to C1 general commercial district. That's the only action item that we had, so I think I will need a motion.
Alright, so we have a motion for approval by Commissioner Isbell and seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, that was the end of the public hearing.
Alright. Alright, Presentation of Reports, County Mayor, Ms. Frank.
I'm sorry, I'm asleep at the wheel there for a second. I only have one action item, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not going to read the entire resolution, this will be presented at a later time. But it is Resolution 2404-1164 honoring the improved benevolent protective order of the Elks of the world on the occasion of the 79th Tennessee State Association Convention. This is going to be held in Oak Ridge, May 3rd through the 7th and will be presented at a later time, but I am asking for approval.
Alright, we have a motion to approve by, well, I got it down as Commissioner Yeager. Let me, we'll just go with it. Seconded by Commissioner Wells. Alright, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the only thing, other thing is, for the minutes, I presented the annual pilot incentive report from the city of Oak Ridge Industrial Development Board, just for your minutes.
Thank you. Okie doke. Is that it? Any questions for the mayor, are we good? Alright. Robbie, you're up.
Thank you, Chairman Mays, and good morning, everyone. First up, the cash and fund balance report for month ending March. The general fund, restricted funds are at 1.5 million, the committed funds are 1.2 million, assigned funds are 4.1 million. An assigned fund balance is at 10.4 million. Total fund balance, 17,337,524, with cash at 22,844,864. The school department, fund balance 8.6 million, cash 19,588,512. Any questions on the fund balance report?
Seeing none, go ahead.
Alright, sales tax really quickly, for the month of February, the state's always two months behind, went down 4.6% as a whole, 3.8 million. The county portion, 463,197, was up 2.11. The county portion, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, one ninety-seven, was up two point seven percent for February. The ARPA Projects report. One point five million in revenue loss still available. Other eligibility's, uh, zero. Total is one point five, one million, five seventy-one, six sixty-nine, twenty-three. We did add the interest earned column to the revenue loss, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six thirty-one, as requested from the Finance Committee. So, um, remaining allocation plus interest is one million, seven ninety-one, six twenty-three for ARPA Projects. Any questions on these, on this project list?
Any question on... Robbie, just for clarification, the appropriation deadline for those funds?
Is April of twenty... December of twenty twenty-four. If Randy would know, and John would know that answer better than me, and I've wrote it down a couple of months, but I didn't this month, but...
I know they're talking about pushing it forward a little bit now, that's...
Okay.
Okay. December of twenty-four is it now? All right.
Not long.
No, right around the corner. All right.
And the next up is the grants inventory list. Um, you can see at the bottom, we added two new grants, the Home Land Security Grant for EMA and, um, the Sheriff's Department Office Recruiting and Retention Grant. So if there's not any questions on that, I'll get into the budget amendments.
Seeing none.
Okay. Uh, Group Two appropriations by the school department, there are three of those, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, seeking approval as a group. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Dr. Parrott is here as well and can answer possible questions.
All right, is there a motion? We have a motion by Commissioner Allen. Is this as a group, sir?
Yes.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Wells. Any discussion on these items? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Under Group Three, transfers from the school department, there are two, fifteen and sixteen, one from the vocational education and one from school nutrition.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen as a group. Is there any discussion on these mo... On this motion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Under Group Four, appropriations non-school, there are eight, seventeen through twenty-four, seeking approval as a group. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Beauchamp, seconded by Commissioner Allen as a group, correct? All right. Any discussion on these items? All right, seeing none, uh, please go to the board and vote. Uh, we will go. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes. Okey-dokey, moving on.
All right, Group Five appropriations that do affect the unassigned fund balance, there was one from the Veteran Service Office for two thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars.
Okey-dokey, we got a motion by Commissioner Wondell and seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Commissioner Aaron? These are end seats here. Uh, what did you vote, sir?
Yeah.
Yes. I thought he was going to be contentious, that's why we held it. All right, motion passes. All right, moving on to...
Group Six.
Group Six.
Transfers. There is one from the Election Office for ten thousand dollars that affects payroll.
Okey-dokey. We have a motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Isbell. Um, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. How do you vote, sir? Yes? Cole, would you get that? All right, fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, under Group Seven, miscellaneous, um, we'd like to say we did start off the meeting with a Budget Committee meeting with an invitation from to Ann Coria, the public defender, and she accepted, and there was much discussion and questions. And, um, I don't have anything, there was no action taken, but we, I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that in case anybody wanted to say anything or have comments, so...
Uh, General Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, to Robbie's point, uh, there were some inaccuracies and some misleading information that was provided to the Budget Committee. And this is on a significant budgetary issue before the commission. And so to that end, I wanted to take just a moment to try and clarify, uh, what's happened.
General, if you have handouts, we, we've got a new rule that hand to the chair and... Yep. Thank you, sir.
But we have background for those that weren't at the Budget Committee. This matter involved a criminal defendant, uh, charged with first degree murder. That person was in the Anderson County Detention Facility and was suffering some medical problems. Um, and not unlike many Friday nights, it started with Commissioner Vowell calling me to let me know that there was an issue involving an inmate at the jail. Uh, we tried to transfer this inmate to the State Special Needs Prison because, uh, they had a brain tumor and required neurosurgery, and they were going to require complicated post-operative care and even pre-operative care. Um, and to that end, uh, we tried to work that out with the public defender's office that was representing him. The sheriff came before the Budget Committee because he wanted the committee to know that the anticipated medical costs may approach a million dollars. And I believe his entire annual budget for all external care of prisoners is somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand dollars. So this was going to have a substantial financial impact on Anderson County mid-budget year. During the course of the presentation before the Budget Committee, the issue was, why was the prisoner not transferred? And the public defender indicated on four or five occasions that they didn't know, but, um, they had declined to sign the agreed order and suggested that the district attorney failed to have a hearing before the court, and also perhaps that Judge Tuck could have ordered the transfer of the defendant, and thus, they weren't responsible for what happened. That concerned me greatly because, in part, Judge Tuck, due to the, uh, rules of judicial conduct, has no way of responding to those concerns. Let me say at the outset, Judge Tuck had no mechanism and no involvement whatsoever in the county incurring these funds. Um, when this matter came up, the public defender's office asked in response to our request for a transfer that we simply release the defendant. I declined to do that, inasmuch as he's charged with first degree murder. So, on that basis and to that extent, perhaps I am responsible for the costs that ensued. But we're not going to release first degree murderers, uh, into our community. And so, if that's the way it falls, so be it. But, as you will see in the outline, after we requested and then filed a motion with the court to have a hearing to transfer this defendant, there were a series of requests for continuance, additional information, and delay coming from the other side. Contrary to what was reported to the Budget Committee, during that ensuing month, we were never told that they declined to sign the agreed order. They asked for more time, they asked for more information. They succeeded in delaying the hearing before the court three times. Uh, and so ultimately, uh, as you may know, a lawsuit was filed against the sheriff, which was then summarily, after a hearing, dismissed. We again asked them to sign the agreed order. After the court had ruled, they again declined, uh, citing a need to delay for checking with other people. We then, the next week, had the hearing, and Judge Tuck ordered the transfer of the defendant. Unfortunately, by that time, the defendant's health had further declined, and he had to have, uh, surgery that was unscheduled because he was destabilizing. Uh, so, I think the medical bills are still coming in. It remains to be seen what the cost to the county will be. Uh, but I, it was important to me, and I hope it's important to commission the county, that, um, we get the facts, um, because it may impact how we do business in the future. I can tell you that my office is reevaluating how we, um, respond and presume, um, defense counsel are handling matters and, and the things that they say. We may also need to reevaluate, uh, the ability of the public defender's office to continue matters by asking that prisoners not be transported to court when they're scheduled to be there. Uh, but we'll engage in that process separately. To the extent that it may have been implied that they didn't know what might happen or the implications of what might happen, I would direct your attention to item eight on the list of the timeline that I provided to you. This was one week into the issue. Assistant Public Defender said, quote, "We understand that this current surgery plan will cost Anderson County a substantial sum for the surgery and the staffing required." So I think that it was foreseen, clearly known by folks that this was a material issue that may have a huge impact on the county budget. All that being said, uh, in the interest of, again, getting the facts before you, as we were, um, working on getting this defendant transferred, the special needs prison in Nashville could not guarantee bed availability for this defendant. And so it's not clear, had an agreed order been signed or had the court ordered the transfer, when the defendant would have actually been transferred, because it's dependent on bed availability. And so, I don't know. I don't think any of us can know when that may have had an impact or what the impact may have been. And in presenting all sides fairly, I think it's important that you know that as well. So thank you for the opportunity to get that information before commission, and we'll be working to make sure that something like this doesn't happen again.
Thank you, General Clark. Um, questions for Commissioner Anderson? Is this for General Clark?
Yeah, maybe, maybe partially. I guess it's, it's more about the, how the inmate's classified. If he, if it's a murder case, I mean, he's a state inmate, right? Technically, is that what he's considered?
No, he's, he's a county pre-trial detainee.
Okay, so, okay, so that was, that's how he's classi... I was trying to figure out with, with those kind of medical bills, why the, why the state doesn't help with that cost? Because I, I feel like we're, we're going to do this for a couple of months, we're going to go back and forth. We fund all sides on this argument, and I don't really... I mean, if the, if the District Attorney's Office does their job, and the public defender does their job, and they both do their jobs well, they're going to come into conflicts. I feel uncomfortable taking one side or the other on that. And I just think the big issue is just, how do we pay for this, and can the state help, or will the state help?
Legally, the county is required, with regard to pre-trial detainees, it is not unheard of in our past to try and get a defendant transferred to the state pr... uh, special needs folks, even pre-trial. One might argue, perhaps, to control the cost. As a state official, that's, that's not my primary concern. It's providing appropriate care, uh, for the defendant to make sure we're meeting that obligation. But that has happened. It's not unprecedented here. Um, what is more common, and the reason Commissioner Vowell calls me, uh, a couple of Friday nights each month, is that we're working on trying to manage costs with regard to medical needs that inmates have. So, let's say, for instance, we've got someone that's been a DUI defendant. They've been hurt in a wreck, um, they have injuries, and they have to be hospitalized. Uh, we may arrange that their detention be delayed because they're hurt to the point they may not pose a risk to the public, so that those costs are incurred by their personal health insurance or some other payment mechanism other than the county. So we're constantly working on that. We've got about four hundred inmates. Not surprisingly, many of them have addiction issues, mental health issues. They have high risk and frequent medical needs. So it's a, it's a high-risk population, and we're working together almost daily to try and manage those costs against public safety concerns and, and detention costs.
All right, Commissioner Beauchamp?
Yes, General Clark, I just wanted to say thank you for coming over here and clearing this up. I know, um, I sit on the Budget Committee and tried to point out some of these things that were going on because I do know the timeline of the things that happen working in the court system. So I just wanted to thank you for coming over here, because you and Judge Tuck did, did get thrown under the bus several times. And I guess when you've defended clients for twenty-plus years, you kind of can defend yourself in that matter. So, uh, I think Ms. Coria tried to do that and throw some other people under the bus in the meantime. Um, so this paper is, um, that you put together for us is a good timeline of, uh, so the other commissioners can be aware of what's going on. So I appreciate you taking the time out today to come over here and clear this up for us.
Happy to do it. If, if you indulge me, Mr. Chairman, forty seconds. Uh, there is a press release that has gone out just a few minutes ago involving the county and another development. Uh, I was going to distribute a copy to commissioners, inasmuch as they'll read about it tonight or see it on TV. We had a, um, bad development, uh, within the Sheriff's Department, but I'm particularly proud of the way they responded quickly and professionally, uh, along with a lot of other partners, to take care of this situation. Uh, and so if you don't mind, I'll distribute that.
You had me scared.
Thank you.
Thank you, General. All right, Robbie?
Yes, sir. Okay, moving on in miscellaneous, grant A. Section A was a grant application for EMS that was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, no match for EMS equipment, to purchase EMS equipment. I just need approval for that application.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen and seconded by Commissioner Wells. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote. Commissioner Allen and Commissioner White? Jerry? Have you... No, I understand. All right, fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Under section B, Senior Center Grant and Roof Project. The first was a grant, um, they've, um, increased the funding amounts for the senior program into budget codes in advance, final work plan approval. In order to meet the spending deadlines, the, um, mayor asked the Budget Committee to give me permission once they have the grant, I mean, the grant budget available where the additional funding can go to do the budget amendment. So we're just asking for approval of that additional funds for the senior center and the grant.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any discussion? All right, go to the board and vote. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay, the other part of section B, uh, Mayor Frank presented appropriation requests for the Senior Center Ruth Repairs in the amount of forty-eight thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. for the senior center roof repairs in the amount of $48,511, with funding to come from the 171 Capital Projects Fund.
Okay, a motion by Commissioner McHamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Seeing none, please go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Okay, under Section C, dispatch and EMS communications equipment. Mayor Frank and EMA Director Braskewal presented a request for $60,367.45 for communications equipment and services with funding from previously allocated ARPA funds in Fund 121.
We have a motion by Commissioner McHamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Okay. Item D was deferred to a special call meeting on May 25th for the Budget Committee. There will be a special call meeting that day at 4:00.
4:00?
That's the purchasing. Is the budget at 4:30? Either 4:00 or 4:30, I'm not sure. I'll have to double-check that. I thought we did too. It's 4:30. It is. Both of them were 4:30.
May 25th, 4:30.
April, this month. I'm sorry, I said May 2. No, that is the Budget Committee special call meeting, that same week on the 25th.
25th.
I apologize, I got ahead.
4:30. Okey-dokey. Commissioner Isbell, did you light up? Okay. All right. Go ahead, Robbie.
Okay, under Section E, new business. Item 26 was a budget amendment already reflected and voted for on the path of the Veteran Service Office. And the second part of new business was Mayor Frank presented a grant pre-application notification from form for a Brownfield redevelopment area grant from the Tennessee Development of Environment and Conservation. Just need approval for that, please.
Okay. We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. 14 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Okay, and one last thing, under Group 8. This was not discussed in the Budget Committee, but it was two months ago. The nonprofit committee made donations to CACAT for $8,405 for window replacement, and the American Legion Post for $10,000. This had to be advertised in the paper before it come back to commission for approval, so we have done that process. I need approval for those.
All right. So we have a motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner McHamey. Any discussion? And is this for both? Okay. Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. 14 yes, 0 no. Motion passes. All right.
That's all.
That's it for purchasing now?
Yes, purchasing committee minutes.
All right.
Under the purchasing committee contracts approved by law director, there were eight of them. We only took seven up. Number four was deferred to the May 22nd meeting at 4:30, a special call meeting.
April 22nd?
Yes. And that has been noticed, April 22nd at 4:30. Did I say May again?
You did.
No, most of our meetings are the next month. I'm already in that mode. But April 22nd at 4:30. And that meeting has been advertised for that. So to answer the question earlier, I don't think we can change that time unless we change the complete meeting. So it has to be public notice, any special call meeting. Time, place, and purpose.
What is the, what is, so we have seven days? Commissioner McHamey, you're recognized, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's holding this special meeting?
Yes, sir.
And it's strictly about the bus contract?
Just the one contract, yes.
Okay. Could they meet at 4:30 and then recess until 6:30? Or 6 o'clock? I mean, I know that would make the members there an hour and a half or so, but I agree with the lady that spoke earlier that the bus drivers are very important part of the community, and I think they need to be able to be at that meeting. And most of them will be on their bus runs at 4:00, so 4:30.
Yeah, I don't think that's a decision I can make. It would be up to Commissioner.
Who's chairman of the...
Commissioner Jaeger.
Is that, is that a possibility that you could delay it? I mean, go ahead and meet and then just recess?
I would say no for that. Even though I would ask the person who brought up. So I would say you better just hold it as is for now and then we'll, I'll have to see. But I think it's 4:30. I'm sorry.
I would like to also add that that was contingent on Jay being able to be at the meeting on the 22nd, which we aren't sure that that's going to happen. So it's a possibility it gets canceled anyway.
Go ahead, Dr.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thanks, I just, well, Commissioner McHamey kind of, kind of answered it. I was going to just ask the drivers roughly when they get done on, on their routes in the afternoon. Mr. Landreth? By 5:00? Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Madam.
I would note that I would anticipate an executive session. So if, if they are getting off at 5:00, they would be able to be... I would anticipate that executive session lasting more than 5 or 15 minutes because part of the terms and conditions of a protest involve reviewing and consulting with counsel. So if the bus drivers could still come, I would anticipate that committee... I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are, Commissioner Chairman Jaeger, but...
Sure. We'll talk slowly. We'll try to stretch things out.
The meeting starts at 4:30?
Yes.
Correct? And then, Mr. Landreth, you said they could be here at 5:00? Or is that when they kind of end the day? Because I agree with the mayor. I anticipate the very first hour, or maybe a little, around an hour, being... So I think that it... And at the very least, if, you know, we can... I mean, you're the chair of the committee. I don't want to speak for you, so... I mean, I think that we could accommodate.
Would you want to clarify then what the executive session entails and why that would be?
Yeah, and Mayor, please feel free to... So an executive session would be, is when the committee... It's, it's a closed meeting with the committee and their attorney. So in this instance, it would be Mr. Jaeger. So there... I don't want to speak on behalf of the committee. I mean, we've got a meeting that day, but there's a good chance at that meeting we'll go into the executive session at the beginning to answer a lot of questions and discuss that process. Once we exit the executive session, then the meeting becomes open to the public. And that's, you know, for anybody else who could, would want to come in. But the folks in that meeting would be the purchasing committee members, the county law director, I think the purchasing agent, and county mayor. And I'm sure other commissioners could, could be in that meeting as well as a member of the legislative body. But outside of that, that would be the extent of who would be in that, in that specific meeting. Then we would open it back up to a regular session. So if y'all were here at 5:15, I would say that's probably, considering we start at 4:30, I would, I would say that we'll be fine. So... And if not, we can do a, a smoke break for Commissioner Palmer, so... So I think that would be, if that's okay with...
That's perfectly fine with, with the chairman, anyway.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, back to the contracts. There were seven contracts approved by the law director, proactive MD, Longmire Bus Lines, Andersonville Bus Lines for three routes, Parker Transportation for nine routes, State of Tennessee Department of Commerce and Insurance, a sheriff contract, Wireless CCTV for the sheriff's contract, and LexisNexis with the law director.
Okey-dokey. We have, is this as a group, Commissioner Jaeger?
Yes, it is.
All right, we have a motion to approve those contracts as a group, seconded by Commissioner Palmer. Any discussion on those items? All right, seeing none, go to the board and vote. All right, 14 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
And the only other business was the special call meeting on the 22nd, which we have already discussed. So that's it for the purchasing agenda as well.
All right. Moving on, Director of Schools, Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Commission, for always letting me come and speak. After the meeting y'all had, the strategic planning meeting, I did put in my report the, not all-inclusive list, but what I could gather from our capital projects that you can look at. A lot of that changes as things tear up and as needs arrive, but that's a good way to look at that. One of the other thing is our board, when I come to y'all a couple of months ago, we were talking about the funding for the new Claxton School. As we got more into it and got into the logistics of it, the board in, in agreement with, with everybody involved that the USDA loan for Claxton School was just not the way we needed to go. It was going to delay the construction about two years and really not saving that much money. We still have, as you know, a lot of the funds that come from the elementary debt service are paid out of the county, out of the school debt already. And so with the debt between what we already put in there and what we need to complete that loan from '26 to '31, with a USD loan was about 3.2 million. With a, at this rate right now, the USDA loan's 3.5, and the, and I don't know what to call it. I don't know if you call it a bond issue, a regular loan. I don't know how to call it. But on the other one that we've been working with Cameron Securities, that would be at, the rate right now would be 4%. So that would be about a 3.8 million gap. It's about $600,000 different. But we do believe that by building it and doing that loan ourself, we can borrow the first loan of 10 million and then the second loan once we do that. We believe that the savings will more than offset that, that number of about 600,000. So the board voted to go with that funding on Thursday night. And so I've got to get with the, it's Robbie and the mayor and see how we move forward with that because we're in the design phase right now of Claxton School, and we hope to be able to put a shovel in the ground come close to January. The, just another couple of things the robotics team has left. They either left last night or they're leaving here soon to go to Nashville, to Houston for the National Robotics Competition. So just a couple of things. Hope you got a chance to read our report. And I want to also thank the Legislative Committee for having us here on Friday. I thought that was a good thing to get a lot of comments. Take any questions.
All right, Commissioner Allen.
Yeah, Dr. Parrott, I'd like to talk about the Tennessee Department of Education report card.
Yes.
And I think it's relevant for our schools. Going down the list, Anderson County High School gets a B. Anderson Count, I'm sorry, Anderson Elementary School gets a B. Bryceville Elementary gets a C. Claxton Elementary gets a B. Clinton High School gets a B. Dutch Valley Elementary gets a C. Fairview Elementary gets a B. Oak, Grand Oak Elementary gets a A. Lake City Elementary gets a C. Lake City Middle School gets a B. Norwood Elementary gets a B. And Norwood Middle School, they get, they get a C. There are two schools on there that get a D.
Yes.
They are not doing well. And that's, those schools are Clinton Middle School, they get a D.
Yes.
And also Norwood Elementary School, they also get a D. When I drilled down into that data to really understand what was taking place there, I, I found out that in the curriculum at Clinton Middle School, the English Language Arts Departments, they are pulling at 29.2%. That's not very good, is it?
Nope.
The math is pulling at 25.6%. That's an F. Science is at 34%, and social studies is at 38%. I think that, is there any way that something can be done to really encourage that grade up? The other thing is, I think it's relevant that it's okay that Commissioner criticized the school system. I love school, and I think it's okay to have a difference of opinion about the school system. So let's not get all upset because someone criticizes what's taking place in our schools. Not you, but, but what I'm saying is that how can we get this, get these schools up from a poor grade by the Tennessee Department of Education up to something very, very well? Because in Oak Ridge, the school systems are A's.
Yep.
There is one school there that, that does have a C, but it's not a D. Okay, so we would like to hear, I would like to find out from you what's being done to elevate those schools, to get them up out of the poor range, up to a B or even an A. C is fine, but we want our schools in Anderson County to be comparable to Maryville, Oak Ridge, and the surrounding schools.
I would agree 100% with that. And, and if, if I have... I don't know the right word. I don't know the words you say. Was critical of anybody in here about, when you talked about Anderson County schools. I'm always open to know what's going on in Anderson County schools. When that, that grade, as you know, the state changed the way they did grading last year. They took a lot of things out of it that, and I'll have a different opinion on that, but I do believe, just like you, that Norwood Elementary School has, went through a change in leadership about two years ago. They are, they are on the right path now. Clinton Middle School, they, here, here's the thing about it, and I, and I won't linger too, but at Clinton Middle School, we have a group of students that come in on 6th grade, and then we have another 150 students come in on 7th grade. And that school has been a level one for about the last six years. And we've talked to everybody in the state. We've had people out there. And so what happens is, when you pull that many new students in one grade, it, it does something with the confidence interval. And, and again, it's no excuse that we can't be better than a D. And, and I think that Ms. Myers and her staff are doing a great job over there. When you look at what they're doing, that does take into account a lot of things, but I do believe there's a lot of other great things going on over there. But no, I'm not okay with that latter grade. And we've had meetings with that. Ms. Smith, our Director of Secondary Education, has met with them. We've met with the State Department. We've met with the core offices. And we do have a plan going forward.
Thank you. Because what I see is the children coming from the elementary schools, they have a grade of a B. And then when they get to the middle school, it drops down to a D. And then they go back up to a B in, in high school. I don't want that dip there, okay?
I understand that.
Like a nice, you know, inclining grade, not going from B back down to a D and then up to a B again.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, just to provide a little context, and those, those report cards don't always have context. The state says we shall educate every child, and the public schools have to take every child. And not every child, some of the children only eat when the school's in session and when they can get food at school. Some of them are having to raise their own siblings. We've got 55 or 60 homeless kids a year usually in school year. That's about 1 in 100 kids, so... So they, they come to us with those kind of circumstances at home, and we say, hey, here's a state mandated test, see how you do. So I think for, for what they've got stacked against them, I think the kids do really well. So I think for, for what they've got stacked against them, I think the kids do really well. I think the teachers do extremely well, and I'm not worried about what the letter grade is.
All right, Commissioner Vandergriff.
I, I think I just want to, what Commissioner Anderson said, um, Anderson County Schools does an amazing job, and I'm, I'm very exhausted at, at the probably emphasis on areas that needed to, need to do a little bit better, but overall, um, my, my child went through school, elementary, middle, high school on IEP. Um, he was, I was told he'd never walk and he'd never talk, and through the help of Anderson County Schools, pre-K, Head Start, he graduated from, from Anderson County High School with a regular diploma, a child that, that wasn't going to walk and talk. And the teachers there poured time and poured effort, and they knew that he had the knowledge in his brain, and there were teachers out there who really worked hard to pull that information. And maybe they weren't able to pull that information out of him in a test, maybe they had to make a video and let him talk through the video. So I also have children on the other end of the spectrum, where my daughter attends Wofford College, she receives about eighty thousand dollars a year in scholarships, and she graduated from Anderson County High School. She also went to Wofford College with college credits. So again, those teachers also poured time and effort in, into the, into their students. So again, I'm just exhausted with hearing how, how, about the areas that Anderson County needs to, to improve, and we do, we need, need to improve those areas. But there are a lot of success stories out, out there too, and I, I think that Anderson County School System need to be recognized for those school, for those accomplishments.
I, I think the, the one thing that, in this bill, the one thing we have tried to do, and I was on the committee with the, the grade card, changing it, and, uh, I spent my whole fall break really, uh, sitting beside of a pool watching my grandkids while I was online. But, but the difference in that is that when you look at Claxton, Claxton was a reward school under the federal guidelines. Uh, Andersonville was a reward school under the federal guidelines. Uh, Grand Oak and Clinton High School, they were all in the top five percent in the state, and, but then you look on the other end, they don't have that A on their grade card. The same distance in Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge had a lot of As, but not a lot of their schools were reward schools. So it, what we hope to do is to make everything the same, so we can, so if you look at a grade, you know exactly what it is. And, and I do think that, uh, uh, we've got some ways to improve, and as you know, I spend twenty-four, seven trying to make sure that happens, and you all, with what you do and help, I think we make it.
Thank you, um, Commissioner Allen, one more thing.
Yeah.
Really quick.
Yeah, uh, do you agree that we should improve?
I do, every day. Every day we need to, we need to do as best we can.
And let me, I just want to, I know this is kind of out of my custom of speaking, but I just want to say as a father, that has a daughter in one of the D schools that you referenced, um, under the new administration that's there. Um, I am, my wife and I are very, very, uh, involved in our daughter's education. Uh, probably a little bit too much, she says, but should just have to get over it. But what I can tell you is, going through that process and, and wondering who's going to lead that school, um, the, the folks that are there now, um, I can tell you, I would stand behind them a hundred and ten percent. Um, but I will tell you this too, my daughter's a very high learner, she makes great grades, but some of these tests and the stress that gets put on these kids and, um, you know, the, that gets put on these, these teachers, um, you know, the, we, everybody needs to get better, we all need to get better individually, but I, I will say this, as a father, I'm very happy with the education that my daughter is currently receiving as a seventh grader at Clinton Middle School. Could, she can do better, but we, uh, but I just wanted to say as a father, uh, thank you for, for the job that they do, uh, at least for my kid, so, thank you. All right, um, moving on, the law director report. Jay, you look different.
I do, thank you. Uh, good morning, Commissioners, um, we only have one action item on the agenda today, um, it is two soccer field leases, uh, one for the East Tennessee Football Club and the other for American Youth Soccer Organization. Um, it is the soccer field on Public Safety Way, so that is all we have for this morning.
Okie dokie, do I have a motion to approve? Uh, we have a motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. And these are, is there any, I guess I could have double checked, but there's no funding in this appropriations or anything for us as a county, okay? All right, uh, seeing none, all in favor say aye? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, moving on to committee reports, uh, we will go to Operations Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under the mayor's report, we took up, Commissioner Anderson made a motion to approve the EEOP policy language update to meet the EEOP requirement, seconded by Commissioner Varren, motion passed unanimous for full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-four dash four dash one one five seven, establishing the Anderson County Emergency Management Agency to include requirements codified in Tennessee Code, annotated Chapter fifty-eight, Title Two, Section one twenty-second, one twenty-seven, seconded by Commissioner Varren, motion passed unanimous for, to full commission for approval.
Okie dokie, we got a motion by Commissioner Wondell, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero four dash one one six five, authorizing Anderson County apply for FY twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five Appalachian Regional Commission, A R C partnerships for the opportunity in workforce and economic revitalization, power implementation grant in the amount of one million twenty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-six to develop and equip an emergency medical services EMS training facility in Anderson County and staff the facility for three years, seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed unanimously for full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, would that need to be a board vote?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, any discussion? Seeing none, go to the board and vote, please. Fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Commissioner Yeager made a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero four dash one one six three, to allow the National Wild Turkey Federation to sanction and host a limited youth turkey hunt on a Blockhouse Valley former landfill site on May eighteen, twenty twenty-four, seconded by Commissioner Varren, motion passed with one no vote for the full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Motion by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to approve to apply for Tennessee Department Environment Conservation Brand Field, Brownfield Redevelopment Area Grant, which is BRAG, for project category investigation for environmental site assessment for pine metal subdivision, seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed unanimously for the full commission for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Palmer, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Under the law director's report, Commissioner Yeager made a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding emergency evacuation, location agreement with Little Lake Pet Lodge and the MOU for the Anderson County Fair Association, location agreement, seconded by Commissioner Allen, motion passed unanimously to afford a full commission for approval.
All right, uh, motion by Commissioner Allen, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have a resolution to vote on ready by Monday's commission meeting for the Fire Department radio, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, motion passed to afford a full commission for approval. Is that what we took up in budget already?
Um, I was going to say, do, I have not seen a, unless I overlooked it, the fire, the Fire Department resolution? Yeah, I haven't seen one.
Yeager wanted to defer that till next month?
Are we talking about the MOU?
Yeah.
Well, why, I, I'm just curious, why does it need to go to the budget?
No, they were asking if we covered it in budget, during budget, and we didn't. And I haven't seen a...
It, it was, uh, it was covered in operations, it had been previously approved, but we did make some modifications, those modifications, um, were just, Commissioner Wondell, I don't have that in front of me, I, I think you have it from Fire Commission. The couple of changes were just, um, with regard to the maintenance, and then, um, also they're going to be annual agreements with each individual department, instead of just a, a big block of agreements where we're all passing it around, waiting on each agency to sign, so.
And you asked for a resolution to be ready today, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I thought all of them were going to be placed on there, uh, I don't mean to cut you off, Mayor, but...
It's on here, but I, I haven't seen the document.
No, I mean, I thought all of the MOUs, we had the constables, we had the volunteer fire departments, uh, I don't know who, who else we had, but the law director...
Yeah, we, we had individual MOUs prepared for each one, I don't know why they didn't get included, but I can send those out as soon as I get back to the office, but we have all of them, um, for the individual volunteer fire departments, as well as the constables, um, between the sheriff and the constable's office for those radios. They have been prepared and approved by, um, Bryce and the mayor.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I, looking at the agenda I have, uh, from the website, I haven't been able to get to the one in my email, but it looks like the only one we have in the package is for the constables, is that what you're showing?
That's the only one that I have seen.
Okay.
I'm okay, I mean, I'm happy to entertain a motion to approve them pending signature or however you all want to do it, I'm...
Mr. Chairman, I, I'll make a motion to approve all MOUs as it relates to equipment for the radios, um, upon approval and signatures.
Okay, is it okay with you, Commissioner Allen, a second? Okie doke, any discussion? Commissioner Bochamp.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, because we had talked last month in our, uh, commission meeting about the, uh, Family Justice Center, so I just want to make sure that that's not included in this, it's just for the fire and the constables.
It is not.
Okay, thank you.
Did you refer, Mr. Chairman, I don't mean to cut you, uh, Rachel, what all, what all MOUs were in there, I can't remember, we had the...
We have all of them for all of the volunteer fire departments, um, as well as the constables.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, it might have just been, um, it, um, a misunderstanding, because I think they already came, and so, um, Rachel did distribute in time, so it came through at, at April ninth at two oh five P M., and I guess only the constable one got included in your agenda packet, but Rachel did send one for Claxton, Marlowe, Medford, um, the updated terms and conditions, Rescue Squad, Bryceville, uh, so all of the, the departments.
So the, okay, so, and this motion covers all of them?
Yes.
All right, was Rescue Squad in that?
Yes.
Uh, yes, the Rescue Squad was a big question. Uh, all of them are ready, to my understanding, the radios, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, except for the constables are still coming in, uh, but they've already been ordered. I'd also like to thank Sheriff's Office for working with us and, and getting everything taken care of, so, uh, yes, I'd like to see this move forward. This is where we took one point two million dollars and put into these radios to be in the state program, and Bryce is ready to roll, and I'd like to see all the volunteer fire departments get them, so we can, as evidenced, we had in our district this week, unfortunately, I would like to see everybody on the same radio.
Sounds good. All right, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, uh, do we, do we need a board vote on this one?
To be safe, I would.
Yeah, let's go to the board and vote, please. All right, fourteen yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and, uh, Jay was not at the Operations Committee, so when it goes under Law Director's Report, although Rachel did a fantastic job.
Good deal.
Thank you, and that concludes the action items for the Operations Committee.
All right, and you're next on Planning Commission, just a, just request a scheduled meeting for the Commissioners.
Yes, what day did we decide on?
It looks like, uh, May seventh.
May seventh, at six P M.
Is everybody good with May seventh at six? It's a joint, um, meeting with, with the Planning Commission.
And that's to discuss where we've been redoing the planning and zoning, and let everybody know where we're at, because there's some, you know, big changes goes from back in the seventies to now, so...
Yeah, and just be thinking of things that I know Commissioner Wondell and I've encountered, just some things that have popped up that we might want to ask, and so, it's a good meeting. All right, um, moving on to Legislative Committee Report by Chairman Wells.
No action items, Representative Butler, Representative Reagan both showed up last Friday at two o'clock, as well as Dr. Parrott at the schools, had a really good informative meeting, um, they keyed us in on, on their stance and how they see the voucher bill potentially moving forward. Um, according to them, thankfully, it sounds like this may get stalled out this session and, and not move forward, uh, but that being said, it was a good meeting, and, and do want to thank, as a volunteer, regardless of where you stand on this issue, I want to thank our representatives for showing up, making themselves...
Talking to your microphone, sir. You don't have to regurgitate all that, but... All right. Okie doke, uh, oh yeah, Commissioner Wondell, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just wanted to compliment, uh, Chairman Wells on that Legislative Committee, I, I enjoyed listening to our representative speak and all the dialogue, and, uh, it was well done, so thank you.
All right, well, you're next up on Fire Commission Report.
Well, my report's going to be easy, Mr. Chairman, we haven't met yet, but we're scheduled to meet tomorrow in this room, uh, at six thirty, is it, we said? Yeah, six thirty will be the Fire Commission meeting tomorrow, and we hope you can come. Uh, I was unable to meet, uh, make it to the Medford Chili Supper, but, uh, two fellow Commissioners here said it went pretty well, so, uh, appreciate that, and I, I'll just encourage everyone, when you have a chance, please support your local, uh, volunteer fire departments and all EMS and emergency responders, uh, when you see them, thank them, because, uh, they do a lot, and sometimes we don't get a chance to really let them know how much we appreciate them, whether they're getting paid or volunteers, I think they all do a great job in Anderson County, and I appreciate it. So we'll meet tomorrow, Mr. Chairman, in this room at, uh, six thirty, thank you.
Yes, sir. All right, is there any announcements to be made?
Yes.
All right, Commissioner Wondell.
Uh, I just want to go on record and thank, uh, first off, prayers for the law director and his continued health recovery, um, and I want to thank, uh, Rachel and Nikki for all they did, uh, they were very active and professional in the way they've handled things, uh, for Jay while he's been out, but, uh, I appreciate what y'all do, thank you.
All right, um, any other announcements? All right, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, did you get to new business? I'm, I'm sorry.
We did, but I, I, there was no motions at the beginning, there was nothing to add.
Oh, okay.
Did I miss something?
Well, I just, I don't know where this would come on the agenda, but, um, given Jay's health situation, I would like to ask for a motion to, um, authorize the engagement, for limited engagement for the Purchasing Committee, there are only seven days, uh, till that purchasing meeting, and someone needs to be in a position to advise, uh, the chairman and that committee. Um, they could certainly work with the law director's office and Rachel, um, it would not require an appropriation, but, um, I did reach out to, um, our counsel, um, with, um, Batson and Roach, I think is, or Watson and Roach, uh, Binge, Lotterback, and they could not, um, advise the Purchasing Committee, because if there is litigation, and we know there may be potential litigation, um, from either party on this matter... And they could not, um, advise the Purchasing Committee, because if there is litigation, and we know there may be potential litigation, um, from either party on this matter, we're looking at six-year contracts, or a six-year contract within the option to renew for an additional six years, which is a potential for $2 million, um, impact, one way or the other. And so, I do think Purchasing Committee does need to have someone who can review this and be prepared to be on hand in case the Law Director is not in attendance at that April 22nd meeting. So, I would like to request authorization to do that. The mayor can hire or engage counsel on my own, but as this would be for the Purchasing Committee, I think it would need an authorization for commission, so...
Okay. Well, I'd like to have a motion to add this to the agenda, because it, again, it's, it's not, um... Is there a motion to... All right, Commissioner McCainy, second by Commissioner Wondell. Any discussion on the motion? Commissioner McCainy?
What about the school board attorney? They have an attorney, would, could that school board attorney represent Anderson County? I mean, the school board is part of Anderson County, so would that be...
I, I wouldn't, I, I could definitely, um, you know, we could, i- if you wanted to do a motion, it could be contingent upon. If their counsel can represent the county as well, then that's a natural solution in the event that he is not here. I mean, I think that's, um, that would be appropriate, but you are, the Purchasing Committee is separate from the school board, so, um, I know...
But I'm out, the reason I'm saying that is the school board attorney would be familiar with what's going on, and, and, you know, they are the ones that have been dealt with all the, uh...
Yes.
protests, you know, and all that. So, I, I would think that person could be involved, maybe not hired as a, as an attorney, but I would suggest that. And then, if needed, that you be authorized to engage counsel.
And of course, it would be just, um, i- in conjunction with the Law Director's. It would not be separate counsel, it would be in conjunction with the Law Director's Office, only for, if he is not able to be there.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, uh, Commissioner Bochamp?
Rachel, you have a law degree, right?
Yes, I am a Tennessee licensed attorney. I have been for six years. I am perfectly capable of handling this, if you would like for me to do that. Um, that, that is why I was hired with the Law Director's Office. I am the Assistant County Attorney. If Jay cannot be there, I will be there.
And that, that's just what I wanted to make clear. We, we pay her a salary to do this. I think she's fully competent to advise us on what we need to do, so...
Okay, so, right now, we have a motion to add this to the agenda. Second by Commissioner Wondell, is there any discussion on this? To add this to the agenda? All right, uh, seeing another discussion, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, new business. So, we've heard the mayor's request in terms of, not request, but advise on whether or not we should, uh, engage with outside counsel in the event, uh, the Law Director is not present on the 22nd. Uh, Commissioner Wells?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, not to put you on the spot, but for the hard question, then, what in your mind justifies looking for outside counsel as opposed to using our Assistant Law Director on this matter specific?
Well, it, that makes me kind of feel a little bit rude, but, um, she does not have, um, extensive experience in representing municipal or county government. And, um, I did get three recommendations of counsel from Binge Lotterback, who have, you know, county municipal experience. They could certainly work with her, but again, this is only, this isn't to represent the county in litigation, it's only in the absence. And this is one of the issues that is, um, you know... I have reached out multiple times over the last 30 days in order to get, um, some type of counsel or advice for the Purchasing Committee. Uh, the Purchasing Committee, I did distribute the, um, school board's legal memo, that is a confidential memo based on potential litigation. But, um, I think it's a matter of experience, and I don't mean that as an insult at all, uh, to, um, Ms. Wallace.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a good thought, I mean, just, I, but I guess, w- w- what I have concern with is if we go outside. First off, I, I'm hopeful that someone will reach out to Mr. Jaeger to see if he might be there. I don't know who would be responsible for that, I'd be happy to give him a call, and maybe, maybe, do you guys know if he plans to...
We just reached out to him, so we'll know soon.
Um, he did come to a meeting that myself and Commissioner, Chairman May's rather, attended, and, uh, he looked very well and surprised he showed, showed up. But, I guess my concern, Mayor, is if we move down the path of getting another attorney, um, how's that work with the, the current Law Director's Office? If we have an outside group, I mean, I don't know how they can work together in that regard, so... Uh, and then, I guess my other thought would be, uh, it would, from my perspective, what about the chairman of the Purchasing Committee? Should be the one to kind of feel comfortable with that, or not feel comfortable with that, and, and I, I think, and I'm not saying you don't have that. I mean, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, you're just wanting to make sure we have the right advice, and, and I don't have any doubts in the Law Director's Office taking care of it. So, I, 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 I'd, I'd guess I'd entertain a motion if we can say that we're gonna allow the Law Director's Office to address the issue. If the Law Director and the office can't handle the issue, then we will go to the mayor's request of outside legal counsel. That's kind of where I'm thinking.
And, and to answer your question, Commissioner Wondell, I did raise this issue with the Purchasing Committee, um, because they, at the last meeting, this is actually deferred, because they did not have counsel, um, as, you know, is, was printed on the RFP under the terms and conditions that they would review this, so this has already been punted into the future. If, if we wanted to look at it from a terms of engagement, it can be, the, this counsel could be managed by Rachel, and she could work with the chairman of, um, Purchasing Committee, so it doesn't have to be where the mayor is managing the litigation. I'm just bringing this to commission to make sure that commission, that Purchasing Committee, that this isn't pushed forward again, and that there is proper advice. So, I'm, I mean, I, I'm totally open to getting that engagement, and if there's funding needed, there's funding in the mayor's office for legal counsel. And I know Jay also has that as well, but Rachel could certainly manage that, or you could put that under the, the commission chairman. It's not that I'm wanting to manage the, so...
Uh, Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioner Wondell touched on what I was, uh, was gonna speak about, and then canceled, then came back on. But I'm a firm supporter of our committees, and I think it's a wise idea for Commissioner, or Chairman Jaeger, to go ahead and express his ideas. I've been chairman of that committee for many years, and it's a very important committee, uh, because they're, take, you know, first look at all the contracts. And then they send them up, and many times, anything that's voted on from Purchasing Committee passes, because they do such a good job in reviewing the contract. So, if you don't mind, Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. I'm comfortable with the idea of hiring, uh, an, an outside attorney to consult with, maybe not be the lead of. Um, I don't... I, I would, I would kind of like to be having, having an outsider who has more experience in, in these county issues. So, I'm not going to say, yes, we're going to, I would, but I would be in favor of it, but, uh, this is a, a full commission decision. It's an uncomfortable situation, I mean, we, we don't know if Jay's gonna be available, and, uh, we don't know the expertise, even though he's served with us in a number of years. But, uh, it, it's a big deal, this contract, and I, I want to have as many hands on deck as I feel can help us. So, I'm not going to be opposed to this, to this idea. I thought you'd say that.
All right, uh, Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not gonna say that I'm opposed to the idea, I, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to figure out, at this point in this process, if it's needed. First of all, knowing Jay the way I do, uh, he's probably gonna be calling and texting and communicating, uh, with Rachel and Nicole quite a bit, leading up to the meeting, ensuring that they are prepared for anything that they assume is going to come up. Second of all, and I don't know how that meeting is going to go, but certainly, I think giving legal advice and legal procedure is something that Rachel is capable of doing. If an issue does come up during the executive session, or whenever, that Rachel is not confident, uh, in her opinion to give, I would assume that she would probably say, I need to double check with Jay before I give an opinion on that. I get where everybody's coming from, I, I, I get the concern, I'm not dismissing that part at all. I'm just not 100% for sure that we're at a point yet, uh, to where we need to engage in the outside counsel. We may get there, uh, but I would certainly lean on the Law Director's Office to let us know, okay, now we've reached that point. So, I would be against it at this time.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Palmer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as a member of the Purchasing Committee, we have had this issue before us for a while now, and we have not... I am uncomfortable making a decision at this point, because we have not received emails or any kind of, um, advice or guidance. And I agree with Chairman Jaeger, um, I think that it, perhaps someone with more experience, and this is no disrespect to anyone, but someone with more experience that could help us, um, I just wonder where that guidance has been along the line? Why our Assistant Law Director perhaps wasn't guiding us as soon as Jay went out, um, on medical? So, I, I, I just, we haven't had it, and so, we're asking for it now, and so, just in case, on this 22nd, seven days from now, he's not available, we need someone to help us, and that's, um, I think all that we're asking for, is, is someone with the expertise that can guide us, 'cause we've not had it yet.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, is there anyone, before I get to Commissioner Bochamp and Commissioner Isbell, anyone has not addressed this issue, would like to... All right, Commissioner Bochamp?
I would just like to say that we do have somebody, I mean, it's unfortunate that Jay went out and had this illness, but how many has contacted the Law Director's Office and asked Rachel this? Because I've contacted Rachel in the last three weeks, and every time I contact her, she responds. So, I just think it's, um, one thing I hate about this county of what we do, is we pay other attorneys when we have attorneys on staff. And I'm very aware, well aware, we just had it, maybe not even a year ago, um, to where we had to pay out all this money to this attorney. So, it don't end with somebody just standing here at the podium advising Rachel or Jay, which I think is a complete slap in the face, because they're two attorneys with law degrees, same law degree, it don't matter where you got it from, it's the same piece of paper. I think that's a slap in the face, if I, you know, somebody come over to the probation office and wanted to try to do probation better than I did, and they didn't have a degree, I'd be kind of upset about that. So, I, I want to apologize to you, Rachel, for everybody acting like that you're incompetent, and then saying that you're not incompetent, that's, you know, kind of stupid. But, anyway, I just want to say that I don't like it that we're gonna pay an attorney, and it's not gonna stop, because they're gonna keep coming back, and they're gonna want to advise us on this, and, oh, you should do this, 'cause we've already seen it. So, I will be voting no on it, and Rachel, I think you've got complete confidence to advise us in this matter.
So, before we, I have failed, as chair, to, to end the discussion before we get a motion on the floor. We're really discussing nothing, I mean, there's nothing to discuss. So, can I, before I get to, uh, Commissioner Isbell and Commissioner McCainy, do we have a motion? Does anybody want to present a motion on this issue? Commissioner Wells, I have a motion, what is your motion, sir?
I have a motion that, just in case Mr. Jaeger's not able to make it on the 22nd, we follow the mayor's recommendation and have outside counsel there to help and work in conjunction with the Law Department.
So, your motion is to go ahead and proceed with this, to have someone in the chamber if Mr. Jaeger's unable to attend?
Correct.
Is that your second? All right. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, my understanding is that the Law Director's Office will have the lead in this, and if this motion passes, whoever's hired will be second, as you see in most major...
Yes, at the recommendation of the mayor, yes, sir.
Yeah, and so, the Law Dir, Law Director's Office will have complete control.
Okay. Is that, Commissioner Palmer, that's, all right. Okay, uh, Commissioner McCainy, you were lit up?
Well, I was gonna point out that we didn't have a motion, we were discussing nothing.
Yeah, yeah. When you gave me that eye, I knew what you were saying. Uh, Commissioner Palmer?
And just a point of clarifying my statement, it's not a matter of competence, it's a matter of availability, and, um, and, and actually being there. So, there's no, I'm not saying anything about competence, it's just, we need someone that is available with experience.
Duly noted. Okay. This will be a board vote, board vote, because it will contain, uh, money. I know funds are already set aside, um, but... I am, Commissioner Wondell?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, finish your...
No, I'm, you're good, it was a good...
I guess what I'm interested in is with the motion on the floor, um, it, it, it's, I think the motion stated just in case. Well, if we're, what happens if the Law Director lets us know, two days from now, or 24 hours from now, that, uh, he'll be there? Does that mean we don't proceed, or does that just in case mean we do it anyway? And, and on top of that, how are we gonna fund it?
Okay, I will defer to the maker of the motion.
So, yes, the motion was, as you said, if he cannot be there, um, so, and as far as funding, that's not part of my intent on this motion, yes, sir, I'd like to get it clean.
All right. So, just, we're clear on the motion. The motion is, correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Wells, the motion is for, um, the mayor to engage outside counsel for support on the May, April 22nd here, uh... Committee meeting, in the event that Jay is unable to attend.
Correct, and work in conjunction with the Law Department.
So, is the motion, if Jay says, yes, I'm coming, Rachel and I are coming, are we still gonna have this member of counsel as a second?
I don't think that would be necessary. I guess I would ask a question, defer into the mayor, what's your, what's your thoughts behind all this?
What I envision, Mr. Chairman, would be the person is given all of the information, working with the Law Director's Office, they are able to review, and they are prepared to attend on the 22nd. If the Law Director is able to be there, then that individual would not appear at the 22nd meeting.
Okay. All right, um, Commissioner Barron?
I simply want to point out, if we do hire outside counsel, and he gives us bad advice, there's no account bill, count, accountability there for him. I think that, you know, you got a pilot and a co-pilot on the plane, something happens, pilot, co-pilot takes over. I think that we should let Rachel handle it if Jay can't make it.
Gotcha.
You know, because, like I say, outside counsel, he's got no bone in this fight.
Okay. Is there anyone, uh, that has not spoke yet? All right, Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you for letting me speak again.
Yes, sir.
And this is just about history, 'cause before, we, we've had this situation several times, and Art and I was always representing the county as well as second or co-counsel. So, it's not anything that's, we haven't done before, because back years ago, we did that quite a bit.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir. All right.
And at the time, the, the Law Director was not opposed to that, because it's your insurance company, basically, they're lawyers for the insurance company. If we are, if we do something wrong, they're there to begin with to see all the statements that's been made and all that.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna enter, enter, uh, Mr. Wells here for the last time.
I would just say, point of, point of difference, yes, if you're on a flight and the pilot does go down, the copilot takes over, but you don't take off without having a pilot and a copilot on, on the plane. So, this is a, a different situation than just dealing with it in the, in the get-go. So, thank you.
All right. Mr. Wondell?
I'm pressing my luck, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I guess the meeting on the 22nd, I, I, I don't, me personally, I don't see it as a court of, uh, hearing to make a final determination, and that, you get the contract, you don't. I, I, I see it as simply an informational type, uh, hearing, or meeting, rather, where they gather the information, not unlike the operations or any other committees, and you get, it still has to come back to this body anyway, whatever the decision is. It's not gonna be made just there, and it's the end of story. So, I think that's a, a, a meeting that'll take place, where everybody pitches their, you know, reasoning and ideas and concerns and thoughts, and then that body will compile that information and bring it back to this body. That's the way I see it or to budget.
Well, I would just say, that was kind of what I initially thought a couple of weeks ago. Um, and then, reading the appeal process, that the Purchasing Committee has to respond and make a, a vote and, or an answer to the actual appeal.
Okay.
And so, I think that's kind of the point of the executive session, and the counsel is, we as a committee have to make a up or down vote on whether or not that the appeal is, is, you know, granted or denied.
Okay.
And then, once that happens, then, I think the, 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 the individual who appeals has 60 days to appeal it to the Chancery Court, uh, depending on that outcome. Um, that's kind of where it's at now, unless I'm missing a, a part, but I think that's where we're at now, is kind of, it's, we have to hear the appeal on the 20, we, I mean, we can push it off on the 22nd, but if we have the meeting, that's the intent of the meeting, is for us to hear it, make a vote, and then, whatever happens after that's kind of.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, are we good? All right, we're gonna go to the board and vote. Voting yes is in favor of Commissioner Wells's, uh, motion to engage outside counsel. No would be to operate as we are right now. All right, six yes, eight no, motion fails. Okeydoke. Um, is there anything else to come before this commission? Commissioner McCamey? This meeting stands adjourned.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.